Oh, yeah.
Go ahead and call this a regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners to order. I'll ask everyone to please stand for a word of prayer and then remain standing with the pledge of allegiance immediately afterwards. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon each and every one of us. Thank you for this great county that we live in. Thank you for this great state. Thank you for this great country. Thank you, dear Lord, for the freedoms that we enjoy by being Americans, help us to never forget those who have fought to gain and preserve those freedoms. Helps to make decisions, dear Lord, that are beneficial to our citizens. And we pray these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything just as it is.
Like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. We've got a fairly lengthy agenda in front of us tonight, so I'll ask everyone if there's any one that wants to speak to any issue that's on the agenda or even afterwards not on the agenda, I'll ask everyone to try to keep their comments to three minutes or less. We'll try to strictly abide by that this evening. With that being said, we have any, we've got several additions to the agenda, Ms. Daniels?
Yes, sir. Under section four, we've got number sixteen, board approval of Blue Springs Sewer Phase One Change Order Four. And number seventeen, board approval of fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five law enforcement agreement with Shippola College. And then a deletion under section five, number five, request board assistance with rebuild Florida home situation. And just, I will just add to what you said that we will, Fred will be setting a three-minute timer for any comments not on the agenda.
Okay, and then also Commissioner McKinney has indicated that item number four under section five, that item will be also deleted.
Oh, sorry.
Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
I misunderstood which item he meant, but that is.
So it's, it's item number four that you're talking about?
And five.
Both items?
Yeah.
Both items, okay. With that being said, Chairman, Chairman Tanne motion to approve the agenda, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Section one, recognitions, resolutions, and presentations, we have none tonight. Under section two, which is our public hearing, we have nothing under the public hearing. That brings us down to community development, section number three. Item number one is board approval to set a public hearing for Eastgate Mobile Home Park. Ms. Daniels?
This is a request to set a public hearing for September tenth, twenty twenty-four at six o'clock P M. To hear a request for an expansion to an existing mobile home park known as Eastgate Mobile Home Park. The expansion request for eighty-three new lots will bring the total number of approved lots to one hundred and twenty-six.
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
This has come up before, and did we correct the spacing?
From nine feet to fifteen feet? Nineteen?
Does that meet the Florida code? And I had a school board member talk to me about this. He was concerned that the school bus stops and I pick, I think they pick up fourteen or fifteen children there on Nanny. But now with the addition, there's going to be a lot more children boarding the bus. Can we work something out so the bus is not stopping on Nanny?
Well, they, they actually have a drive coming in off of, what is that, Lake, Lake Road or what? Lake Shore?
So you've corrected that. I mean, you're going to take care of that. I'll make a motion we approve with those stipulations.
So we're, we're actually just proceeding a public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Okay, just checking, making sure.
Yeah.
Okay, we got the motion from Commissioner Peacock to set a public hearing. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number two, board approval of an alcoholic beverage license, this is for Dollar, Dollar General Store seventeen three ninety-two. Ms. Daniels?
On August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, a request was made by Dollar General Corporation for a new alcoholic beverage license for packaged sales of beer and wine to A P S. Dollar General is located at thirty-six twenty-eight Highway sixty-nine in unincorporated Jackson County.
Go move.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner McKinney, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed. Same sign, that motion also carries unanimously. Item number three is to set a public hearing for Bethlehem Ridge subdivision, Ms. Daniels?
This is a request to set a public hearing for September tenth, twenty twenty-four at six o'clock P M. To discuss potential ten-lot minor subdivision to be known as Bethlehem Ridge subdivision. The proposed subdivision lots range from five acres to sixteen point five two acres. On July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the board tabled this item for more information. And on July first, the planning commission recommended approval.
Again, this is just a motion to set a public hearing.
No move.
A motion from Mr. Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Comments, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand, all opposed. Same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Under section four, reports and requests, item number one is the consent agenda item. I trust everyone's had a chance to look at those items. Hearing so, Chair Lintertan motion, Commissioner Peacock made a motion, Mr. Branch, second. Any questions concerning the consent agenda items, hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda approval, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed. Same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number two, under reports and requests is economic development project, Mr. Chilpan Delaw, is he in the audience?
He, uh, I believe is joining us virtually.
Okay, Mr. Delaw, are you online?
I'm not showing him online tonight.
Okay, we'll skip down on that and we'll offer him an opportunity to, to address us a little later, should he come back on. Taking us down to item number three, this is board approval of mosquito control, this is annual certified budget and the detailed work plan. Good evening.
So, as you said, the annual certified budget and the detailed work plan, the detailed work plan is back because we received an increase from F Dax funding. And so we had to reflect the increase in the new budget plan, so that.
How much was that?
It was an additional twenty-seven thousand, seven forty-five and fifty-nine.
What would that, what would that allow you to do differently?
Um, well, what, what we had had planned was, um, the tier threes, the fiscal, fiscally constrained counties are exempt from the twenty-five percent match, so we were wanting for you guys to hold the twenty thousand back because we can still run the program with this additional with F Dax without, without that twenty thousand. So we did take that, the local part out of the budget.
Okay, any questions?
So you're asking us to hold back twenty thousand? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. We received the additional twenty-seven from F Dax.
Okay, you want to hold, I make a motion. Pray those mosquitoes.
Yes, sir.
Got motions from Commissioner Peacock to approve the annual budget and detailed work plan from mosquito control. Second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number four, moving down the agenda, is board approval to appoint two county commissioners to serve on the value adjustment board.
Yeah, these meetings are scheduled for October fourteenth at nine A M. For V A B training and October twenty-first and twenty-second at nine A M. for V A B hearing, looking for two commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we appoint Donnie Branch and Mr. Crutchfield. Second.
Motion from Commissioner Peacock, and second from Commissioner McKinney to appoint Commissioner Branch and Commissioner Crutchfield.
Let me, let me see what.
Well, there's more to it than just training.
Well.
I've served on that board a couple of times.
I mean, you were serving on it this last time, too.
Yeah, I served on it last time. If we need to, I'll serve again.
Is they, they'll meet when?
October.
October. Are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is to appoint Mr. Branch and Commissioner Crutchfield. Got motion and second, any question, any other questions, concerns, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand, all opposed, that's motion carries unanimously. Item number five is approval to appoint a citizen member to serve on the same board. Ms. Daniels, who is that?
Uh, this is Enat Williams.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve, Mr. Williams.
And Mr. Williams has served on this for a number of years.
Many times.
Yeah. That's good. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Mr. Crutchfield to appoint Enik Williams as the, as the citizen member to serve on the value adjustment board, any questions?
What about the rest of them that's on the board, there's more, some other citizens on the board and school board members, they don't have to be appointed.
I'm not sure about that.
The school board appoints their own.
Okay.
The guy from Alford serves on it, what's his name?
George.
No.
Yes.
The only one we're concerned about is appointing citizens.
Right. We'll take care of that. The, the school board does the.
I know. I have one.
Yeah, that's important.
Me, the homeowner, I don't know how possible.
Okay, we, we made a motion and a second, who, who had the motion?
Oh.
Commissioner Peacock, yeah. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield, we didn't vote, though, correct?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. I saw Mr. Delaw to come in just a few minutes ago, can we jump back down to item number two, which is basically a report on the progress on your economic development project, Mr. Delaw? Have you got anything new to report to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, dealing with franchise people right now, uh, but I have been nice from Whataburger. Tried with steak and shake because I have a gas station across the land coming, so I'm not going for a gas station right now.
Okay.
But I'm trying to deal with some franchisee restaurant or some kind of restaurant.
Now, what was the last thing that you said?
Uh, I talked to, I, I was in communicating with Whataburger.
Okay, water management?
What?
Whataburger.
Okay.
Whataburger, the franchisee restaurant. But they don't see right now is survival or whatever. I tried with steak and shake. I'm not sure yet, I'm waiting, so I'm dealing with a couple of, but I'm keeping E D C person in Gilmore, Mr. Gilmore. I keep him updated, I talk to him frequently about two, three times a month and keeping him in a loop. What I'm doing, how can I get help or anything?
So right now, are you coming in and reporting progress to us on a monthly basis, or is it a quarterly basis that we're on?
Quarterly basis, sir.
Quarterly basis? Any questions? Uh, Commissioner Peacock?
According to the agreement, you're supposed to be well on your way and almost finished by April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Have you got somebody in mind? Have you got somebody really nailed down that you could fix and do a contract with, or you just?
I have one engineer working with me, what happens, Mr. Peacock? If they build a building, but the franchisee or restaurant owner says, no, we need this size, then I have to make a change. I cannot do that, so I'm waiting. If that don't go through or it don't work, then I'll make my independent restaurant and go move forward.
Okay, any other questions? Anything else, Mr. Long?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us down to item number six, which is board approval of the sheriff's budget amendment for sick leave buyback in the amount of ten thousand thirteen dollars and sixty-five cents. Ms. Daniels?
This is for Crystal Hamlin, recently entered the drop, she had more than twenty-five years of service at that time. According to the policy, she was eligible for sick leave payout of twenty-five percent, uh, up to four hundred and eighty hours. And so this is just a request for a budget amendment in the amount of ten thousand thirteen dollars and sixty-five cents.
You heard the explanation from Ms. Daniels? Chair Lintertan motion from Commissioner Branch. Second from Commissioner McKinney, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number seven is board approval for payment of nine thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cent to the Jackson County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Training, Ms. Daniels?
Yes, this is a request for nine thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cent for training reimbursement for specific law enforcement training outlined in the attachment.
Make the motion approved.
You got a motion from Mr. Crutchfield, question from Commissioner Peacock?
Is this a grant? That, or is that where the money's coming from?
No, this is, um, a budgeted amount, the local law enforcement training fund, but they just have to request the reimbursement for it.
So this, this is part of, this is years for vacant?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield, second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand, all opposed. Same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number eight is board approval of change order number two, this is for the Watson Street Drainage Project, Ms. Daniels?
Yes, this will add a total thirty-three days to the contract, three days due to holidays and weather, and thirty days for existing utility conflict delays.
I think I asked this last time, Rep., um, with Baxter's Astol going out of business, Anderson Columbia taking over their, I assume over their contracts, is that all pretty straight? I mean, I, maybe, I think I asked this last time, you felt like it would be completed maybe even quicker.
That's right, so they are out of time, I think actually last Friday was their contract end. So, um, speaking with D H M, we agreed to thirty-three days, that would be a month plus three weather days. But they have made a showing in the past two weeks, so I'm very confident they'll complete this ahead of the new schedule.
Okay. Okay, the request is for additional days to that be added to the contract via change order number two, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number nine is board approval to change the public hearing date for an ordinance regarding the disposition and acquisition of real property, Ms. Daniels?
Yes, we're asking to change that public hearing to September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four at six o'clock P M.
Okay.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Mr. Crutchfield, question?
I do. What part of this is going to cover land we get through tax fees?
It's not specific to that, so.
There is a section in there that will cover it.
No.
How are we going to? We've got five lots that we're getting, assuming you are in the process of taking down in Compass Lake in the hills on tax deeds, so how are we going to deal with them?
Well, you'll have a multitude of options under the new ordinance. It's just not specific to that, to any property.
It's any, any.
I, I knew it wasn't specific.
But it's covered by this.
That's, I just wanted to make sure it was covered, thank you.
But it's, it's not specifically addressed in this.
Right.
Okay, we got a motion from Commission, did you get a motion, Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield? Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Item number ten. This is board discussion of accounts receivable for utilities billing, Ms. Daniels?
So the city of Marianna is considering a leak adjustment based on historical usage compared to a new meter usage for Camp Anderson or Camp Real Life, which will reduce the sewer bill considerably. Their usage has leveled off and we will see the usage should, what the usage should have been over the past few years. Um, they've submitted a letter from their plumber stating they are not aware of any additional leaks and we will make an adjustment after this month's bill is posted. And the average stays the same, and then the Aviva bill is being paid monthly. However, the balance that was accumulated during their bankruptcy is still outstanding. Our attorneys filed the proof of claim, but the deadline isn't until September, so it could be at least a month before we know the outcome. So what was your recommendation here?
There was one that was just requested that I bring updates monthly to the board. So we had hoped to get the campaign someone yesterday, but with our issues, we weren't able to reach. So I have three months worth this week, and then I will use those three months to average out the past previous usage, and then I'll have harder numbers.
But in my conversation, you, the, they have made significant repairs on their water system out there, it should reduce substantially the amount of water that they're losing. That was my question. You feel good about what they've done?
Yes, sir, so they act, they, they made quite a significant investment in their system, and I just want to make that point again. They're not your typical customer, they, um, they have their own water system, they just happen to get water. So they've got hydrants, they've got, I forget how many of their buildings, a pool and a whole bunch of stuff, so they've invested, I want to say twelve thousand dollars in radio receivers, when we're able to read, and that's what we're using to get these last three months averages. Um, so, yeah, they're out there.
And the city of Marianna has in, indicated that they are going to work with them to reduce the sewer usage based on that water usage.
So what we're able to do now is compare, so we have an actual meter that feeds their entire system, now we've got individual meters on all the buildings. So we can compare the two as to what is consuming water versus what is.
So this is usually a discussion item, there's no action required, but opportunity to ask, Rep., or Ms. Daniels, any questions pertaining to either of those two accounts? With that being said, we'll move down to item number eleven, which is board adoption of a utility service call fee schedule, Ms. Daniels?
We'd like the board to consider adopting a fee schedule to include fees for service calls due to customer damage to county equipment. Uh, we're experiencing ongoing issues with customers sewer pumps being clogged due to customers pouring grease or foreign objects down the drain. This has caused the sewer pumps to become blocked and shut down. It's caused several hours of overtime and or callouts for employees must respond to the residents to then clean or repair the sewer pumps. Um, so we'd like to educate on the first occurrence, so free, just go out, explain this is why this is happening. Um, and then, of course, if it happens again, the proposal is that the second uh, callout is fifty dollars and third callout and beyond would be one hundred dollars.
And so if, if the, the second callout is totally unrelated to the first callout, it's a totally separate issue, there's no charge for that. Is that correct? I mean, in other words, if the first call was a clogged pump and the next call was something totally unrelated, that would not be a charge there.
So the, go ahead.
Biggest fear that, that is part of is we're coming up on our five-year warranty of these pumps. And our main factor, ourselves, have been real leaning on it, but I just have a fear that some of these free suppliers we have are going to continue to be problems and we need
Well, they can be as much as four thousand, there are four thousand dollars a pump, so just trying to create some uh, incentive to not put foreign objects or grease.
You feel like the, 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 the fees that you're proposing are fair, both for the customer and for the county?
I do.
Well, you, what did, I mean, you compared to some surrounding areas?
Um, I know the city of Marianna, if you have an after-hours call, I believe it's forty dollars regardless, it doesn't matter. If you, you call them out, you get forty dollars out of your bill. Um, so obviously, in some cases, it's not customer's fault, we understand that. And we will be tracking all occurrences within our billing system under that account, so we can refer back as a part, you know, again, the properties change hands, um, and if we've had a wide span of time between two, you know, we're, we're going to be lenient with folks, but we do have some that really get their attention.
Right, thinking my thought.
So the request is to approve these rates, uh, as, to approve these rates, uh, as part of our utility billing?
Yes, sir.
So, boy.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Comments, I'm, I think this is a fair thing, again, as long as we'll be lenient, and, uh, again, it is a little bit of an incentive to ask people to be cognizant about not, you know, being careful with what they put into the system.
Right, I, I like the first, I like the first call, callouts.
Yeah.
You know, free.
Yes, sir.
You know, to educate, that's, that's. Are we going to develop a policy on this? And are we going to provide the customers with this?
Well, that's kind of tricky because they've already agreed to it in their, uh, customer application for low-pressure sewer, so all, not the fee schedule itself, but it foreign objects, things that shouldn't be going in the system.
Right.
They're all aware ahead of time.
Well, we need, I think we need to develop a policy and we need to educate the public as to what is being proposed.
I think we can certainly get out a press release through Mary.
I think something needs to go in the water bill.
That's, that's what we do, so we could, um, under our utilities website, or the utilities tab on the website, we can put it there, create a U R L, put the U R L directly on the, on the bill, and everybody will have a chance to look at it.
And I would also suggest we do a press release as well, I think it would be hard to do both. All right, we got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Takes us down to item number twelve, uh, which is board approval of the D E P twenty-four twenty-five solid wasted grant agreement, Ms. Daniels?
Uh, the grant's used annually to fund the recycling program, it's funded through D E P in the amount of ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, just asking for the board to approve the grant agreement.
Just the same amount as it has been for several years.
The last three years, I think.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. Opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number thirteen is board approval of an in-kind project for, uh, this is for our F D E P consent, uh, consent order. You want to handle that, Ms. Daniels, or?
Sure. So we received a letter from F D E P last week, um, notifying us of spills within the last two-year span of time. Um, part of the state statutes, you know, they have a fee schedule based on gallons and timing and all that sort of stuff, so the fine itself is twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty. I'm requesting the board to approve an in-kind project of up to, or a minimum of thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And these funds can be expended to make improvements to our waste water system.
It can't be related to the actual, uh, the consenta, consent order, it has to be something different than that, right, or is that?
No, this is for that.
Okay. Um, so, go ahead.
Uh, who determines the amount of the spill?
Me.
You got calibrated eyes?
I have pump data, um, and manufactured stats for efficiency. And the blue book, or, yeah, the blue book.
So we know what the pumps are pumping and that's what's coming out?
That's right.
All right. Um, can we use this money some way to move that, uh, lift station?
We could, but it wouldn't go very far forward.
Well, I know, but it would help.
Yeah, but I don't.
And getting it away from the creek would help, too.
Well, it's going to have to stay in the vicinity, um, so some projects that have been approved in the past would be like, uh, an emergency bypass pump, uh, spare pumps, um, some places have spare control panels that are kind of plug and play, so there's a lot of options to make the investment improved.
You feel pretty comfortable with all of the other conditions?
Yes.
As far as the timing and how it's got to be approved, the project's got to be approved by the D E P and got to be in place by a certain amount of time, all those conditions are.
So once this is signed and submitted, um, which is fifteen days from last week when it was received, um, I'll, I'll submit my request for the project, and then once that's approved, I can easily get that done within their timeframe.
Okay. For the request, Chair Lintertan a motion to, uh, for the approval of the in-kind project in the amount of thirty-six thousand, what was it, thirty-six thousand?
Two twenty.
Two twenty-five. Got second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please send the answer by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number fourteen, moving down the agenda, is board approval of the final close-up for the Changalaw demo project, Ms. Daniels?
Presley's Construction has completed the scope of work, project has been inspected and approved by staff at D H M. We're requesting final payout and closeout of this project.
I'm with.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock?
Second.
Second from Commissioner McKinney, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number fifteen is board approval of a, uh, right-of-way survey of Woodrest Road, Ms. Daniels?
This proposal is to stake the twenty-two-foot right-of-way on Woodrest Road so that our greater operator. This proposal is to stake the twenty-two foot right away on Woodrest Road so that our greater operator does not encroach on private property. Three thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars from road construction fund.
One question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
How are we going to mark this?
So once they, once the survey company stakes it, so they'll do the corners and then the radius, a little bit of a curve. So they'll do the radius along. And then we'll just work off of their stakes.
I mean, what will you actually physically mark it with? Is that your question?
The wooden stakes aren't going to last long. If we stay off of them, they should. No, 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 no. They won't last for a year or two. I would suggest, the problems we've had with that road.
Yeah.
I'd go out there and get some T posts installed.
We'll save some.
Yeah, because those wooden stakes don't last.
Yeah.
And again, yeah, if we can keep the motor greater, I fault you. But everybody else is going to be hitting them too.
That, that's what I'm worried about. The T posts will cause more maintenance and then they're going to get into a.
Mark it some way. Put a metal post there and mark it.
How, how many linear foot are we talking about? Do you remember? Lot of hand?
I don't. Several hundred.
Several hundred feet. So you're talking about several posts.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And I, and certainly don't want to ex, ex, expend, uh, bear the cost of putting a fence up.
So, but if you put them, you know, every two or three hundred feet, so he can see it.
You may, you may be able to do a hybrid system where you put some of them up at critical points and then in between maybe wood stakes so that if you, the wood stakes do deteriorate. You know, this, and you can come back in and put them, put them up pretty easily.
The right away is only twenty-two feet?
Sorry?
The right away is only twenty-two feet?
Yes.
Two cars, that's pretty close to a post.
Yeah.
We meet them.
We, uh, this is a result of a lawsuit that we had on that road. We can need to mark it and market permanently is what I'm saying. Like you can come up with something better than, I mean, certainly you could go buy the fiberglass slip things. Uh, but it may be worth it. They.
Are twenty-two feet of right away. Two cars meeting.
That's a good time.
Well, I would come bring back maybe some recommendation for this as far as how you can market and something that will stay there. Or maybe PVC post or something that can bend if it's hit, you know? I'm sure there's ways of solving that.
And we'll make sure most of them are reflected too, just in case.
Okay. All right. Chair Luntaner motion to, uh, did we get a motion on that, Clay?
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock?
McKinney, I, contingent. Right. Contingent upon, you know, the marking of the, uh, road.
Okay. Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Peacock. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated. Please symbolize by raising the right hand. Opposed, same sign. Um, takes us down to item number sixteen, which was added, which is, uh, board approval of Blue Springs Sewer Phase One Change Order Number Four. Ms. Daniels?
Uh, this change order will deduct the North Sewer conveyance from the interest of Spring Chase. Um, this is a deductive change order of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, sixty-four dollars and ten cents.
So, uh, this is in my district. This is actually, what, what are we actually doing again? Rep?
Those two things, we're reducing the scope for the gravity that's going into Spring Chase. Just removing that from the project.
Okay.
And then adding in four foot shoulders for the paved portion of Blue Springs Road. Um, that way it'll tie in to eventually where our DOT money runs out. So the road is more uniform.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
Uh, motion for Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions?
That would be contingent on the U P funding.
And that, that.
The shoulders.
Right. Okay. And you, uh, there should not be any problem with that.
We're not anticipating any, no, sir.
Okay. A motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated. Please signify by raising the right hand. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Uh, number seventeen is a board approval of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five law enforcement agreement with, uh, Shippola College. Ms. Daniels?
This agreement is a continuation agreement from prior years, and there's no change from the prior, prior year agreement that was approved by the board.
Okay. A motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated. Please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Uh, moving down concludes, uh, section four. Takes us down to section five, which is other matters and matters of the public. Item number one is the town of Greenwood, uh, Mr. Johnson. And Ms. Nysnep.
This is just a thank you for, uh, the board and the commission, Jackson County, one for letting Lindsay Dara come up to our meetings every month. She informed us of what's going on in the county and we like that. We appreciate her doing that. Also, two, thank you for letting us use Great Oaks. And we got November the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, this coming November, celebrating the Greenwood two-hundred year bicentennial this year. So put that on your calendars, uh, and I will turn that over to Ms. Nysnep, because she is our chair of this committee of the, uh, bicentennial.
Please mark your calendars. I don't need to stand up there because the mouth is loud enough. Please mark your calendars. Um, November sixteenth is a Saturday. And we're gonna be kicking off at three o'clock in the afternoon and go all the way to eight o'clock in the evening. From three to five, we'll be very oriented with children and families. And from five to eight, um, we're going to have a band there. And have some, a little adult fun. But, um, we're going to have some food trucks. And we're going to have bounce houses for the children. We've got a petting zoo coming. We've got lots of fun things for everybody. And we want you to come and celebrate our two-hundredth birthday. It's such a feat. And having it at the Great Oaks is an honor. I've been in Jackson County all my life, um, raised in Greenwood, so I'm not quite two-hundred, but I am so proud of our team and the things that we've accomplished in the past several years. I thank you very much. Are there any questions? Do you have any questions?
No, but I will say, I don't have any questions, but I will say it's a very momentous occasion for sure. And I'm, I'm certainly very glad that, uh, we were able to secure uh, Great Oaks, uh, for, uh, not only for Jackson County, but for the town of Greenwood. I think that's a tremendous uh, opportunity for Jackson County. And we're very appreciative of, uh, Colonel, or General, General Hart and, uh, Bill Stanton, uh, Pat Chris for their offer to, uh, basically give that to the county for a very, very low price. And, uh, we'll able, hopefully be able to preserve and, uh, uh, refurbish and restore, uh, that, uh, very great building. I mean, a very historic, uh, architecturally significant, historically significant building for, uh, uh, both the town of Greenwood and for Jackson County to use for many, many years. So we're excited, we're excited for Greenwood.
We have, um, a number of historical sites in our town.
Absolutely.
And anytime you're there, please, please come by and, and enjoy them. They're beautiful. And, and we're proud of them. Thank you very much. And if you need anything, let us know. If you have any question.
What day, what, what date is that?
It's Saturday, November sixteenth.
November sixteenth.
Yes, please come. I want everybody there. I want count heads.
I'm sure it'll be, I'm sure it'll be, uh, like I say, a momentous occasion and I'm sure it'll be very well attended. Commissioner Peacock?
No.
Well, we're looking forward to it and I hope the weather will cooperate. I mean, it's, you know, we'll, we'll keep our thunderstraws.
Be cool, no gas, no party.
I see Charlie in the audience. Anything you want to add back there?
Oh, here we have, here are town clerks. So Greenwood is represented well tonight. Thank you for having us.
And we can keep that going with the, uh, Great Oaks and, and Greenwood, our partnership there because we're looking forward to it. One last thing I would add, thank you. Are you, if you know, or you don't know, the Greenwood Gymnasium was built in nineteen forty, the roof fell in. We were already kind of in the process of working on getting bids on demolition. Unfortunately, on Father's Day that night at eleven eighteen by camera, the roof collapsed. So we've had to close the park. We've got all that demolition done with the county. I've spoken with Red and worked with him. I think he'll have the numbers to help us get dirt in there, back into the hole where they came out. So we can get our park back open. That's been closed for about two weeks.
Basically, we're just going to provide, basically provide, uh, field dirt, uh, transport it up there and you guys will be responsible for basically.
Yeah, we're going to spread it out. We're going to do all that in the spring, but I just want to thank y'all for helping us on that too.
What, what are your future plans for us? You going to open court setting for basketball or?
Well, we got basketball courts up there. We are trying to get some pickleball courts. We're in the right, that's in the process. But right now it's just to get the dirt and we're going to put sod in the spring and then our options are maybe a big pole barn because we left back in the, the back of the gym where the locker rooms were. It's a big old slab of concrete. I don't know with the measurements if it's eighty foot wide, ninety foot wide, I don't think. Seven-five by twenty, she's got it. So that's kind of a platform where we're looking to have, you know, where we can do a lot of stuff. It's just we hadn't got to that point. We're just trying right now to get it cleaned up and get our park open.
Leave you a lot of options.
Right, yeah. We got a lot of options for it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we designate this a community services project. And supply the town of Greenwood, the, they said sixty loads of dirt, how much dirt they need. And get the project complete.
That's seven.
Motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated. Please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for coming to the, coming to the meeting and we look forward to, uh, November sixteenth.
Good.
Okay, uh, item number two, uh, is board approval to waive the ag center rental fees. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, I believe there may be a representative here.
Ms. Gardner? Good evening.
I'm standing in for Joelle Roberts tonight. Um, Jackson County Education Foundation was established in twenty thirteen. And what it basically does, as we have spoken to all of you last year, so I think you have the concept of what it does. We get matching dollars from the state based on F T E. And then we have to raise money to match that amount of money. And our teachers like grants, which they're doing impressively. And then we get together and award that. In years past, we have an activity called Four Students, Five Students. It is where the F F A children come in, cook pork chops and the, and serve plates. And then we serve to the community and to the schools. We are respectfully asking you to waiver the cost because it takes money out of our five oh one C three that goes back to our schools. It is November the twenty-first, around nine thirty, ten o'clock at night. The students supervise very well will come in and start smoking pork chops. And we should be finished by about one or two o'clock on, uh, November the twenty-second. If there is a problem with the facility with it being Friday, if we have to change the location for pickup, we can do that. It is late this year. The purpose of why it is late this year is our F F A students do so well and they keep going to nationals and we can't short change their successes. And they are a key part. Do you have any questions?
But that's a good reason to postpone it a little later in the year.
Absolutely. It is also the Friday before Thanksgiving. As said back here, feel free to buy five pork chops for twenty-five dollars and take them home and eat them for, uh, over the holidays or whatever, because it is, uh, we know that the pork chops sell our plates. And it is done by the F F A.
I know that we have waived fees in the past for organizations such as this, and this is a, certainly a good organization. And I commend you, Ms. Gardner, for all the work that you do for that organization. I mean, you put your heart and soul into it and, uh, it's a very good cause. And, uh, you do a lot of good work for that, so.
Well, thank you, sir, but I'm stepping down.
I know you are.
Joelle Roberts was supposed to be here and she just couldn't make it. So here I am at the last minute.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions? Other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated. Please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign.
I think that someone will be calling you for a word for John.
Sure you will.
As you will too.
The second one for Ms. Roberts is, um, I'm sorry. Can you handle that, please?
I will. I can. And if I could just say on that last item, just as a reminder to the board, we have a policy that even when you waive the fee, we require the security deposit. We give that right back once we check the facility. Uh, but we've just been doing that for all, so that everyone's treated the same as far as the security deposit.
I think that's a good policy.
Perfect.
Okay. Item number three then is a board approval to use, uh, the grounds for Woodman of the World flag dedication. This is at Citizen Lodge. And this is on nine eleven.
Yes, the Woodman of the World has sponsored three flag poles that were installed at Citizen's Lodge. And now they would like to hold a flag dedication ceremony on nine eleven twenty-four. They'd like to invite the commissioners and staff to attend as well as have fire rescue and sheriff's office participation.
Okay. Heard the request. Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner Peacock. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated. Please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Items number four and five were eliminated from the agenda. So that takes us down to, uh, any comment from anyone in the audience wishing to speak to, uh, uh, any item that's not on the agenda? Now is your time. Seeing no hands go up in the audience? If you want, okay. Well, again, we're going to try to limit it to three minutes to know. Okay? And your name is?
Jared Primmers. You met me two weeks ago. I'm the burn victim.
Yep.
I'm actually doing pretty well, by the way. All right. I have a couple of hot topics. Actually, this is in regards to District One and District Two from Mr. McKinney and Mr. Crutchfield. Um, I actually did a lot of research digging the last couple of weeks, um, throughout last year and through this year. Um, we, as a business of a livestock rescue in Graceville, have been, um, underwater, I guess you could say is the best thing. And let me kind of explain. In February of twenty-three, uh, we cleared a four hundred by four hundred lot that was not a part of any wetlands whatsoever on our property. And doing so, that was our ability as a livestock rescue to house future animals and future horses that was going to be built for storage and kept cute. Now, in January ninth of this year, we suffered that major tornado. Everyone knows it. All right. There's a lot of damage done, especially on Highway Two. In March ninth is when we got the major rainstorm that flooded everything, including uh, our personal friend, Mr. Dietrich, who lost almost four hundred acres of just flooding alone, which nearly ruined all of his crops. In April and May of this year, a contracting company, unfortunately, I do not have the name of that company, was contracted out for several weeks, um, under Highway Two to dig out ditches. They were going with a mini excavator, a team of four, and they were supposed to basically scrape out the culverts. Now, unfortunately, all I was able to see was all of Highway Two, but they were able to scrape out the ditches to basically clean out. And I guess you could say reculvert the area to allow more water access to come in. That is where the major problem, uh, is, is residing. Do anybody on the board knows what creates wetlands and who creates the wetlands in Jackson County?
Yeah.
Um, well, weapons are not created in Jackson County, particularly the certain natural states.
Correct. But who, but who puts the title on the wetlands? It's actually in the F W C. So the Florida Department of Environmental Protection has responsibility to perform formal wetland delations. The EPA and Corps of Engineers use of nineteen eighty-seven Corps of Engineer Wetland Delation Manual and Regional Supplements to define wetlands for the Clean Water Act Section four oh four permit program. Now, wetlands in Florida are all around. They literally go from the Panhandle all the way down to the Keys. Now, wetlands do save Florida a lot of money. They save twenty-three billion dollars annually and it reduces hurricane damage and flooding, which is by far the costliest damage in the U S alone, i.e. Katrina.
Ten seconds.
Um, I'm only.
Go, go ahead.
Okay, okay. Uh, now, there are downsides obviously to wetlands. Pollutants in the ground, freshwater surfaces that flow through wetlands can be toxic to plants, animals, and accumulate wetland sediments. Now, it normally takes one to two years to create a wetland and Florida, and F W C has to come out and approve it. But how do we fix wetland problems that are either on private property or public accessways in the county or in the state alone? You backfill ditches, usually dredge to promote irrigation and move water. You construct berms, control weeds, excavation, water control structures, reconnect floodplains, restore backwaters, channels, bends, and also prescribing fires to suppress weeds and encourage growth. Now, this is where we come into play as a non, as a nonprofit, uh, rescue. We, uh, we have lost, um, I'd, I'd hate to say it, and I have pictures to prove it. We unfortunately have lost animals due to these wetland problems. Where our property sits, and actually, Mr. McKinney, you have two runoff areas that are on the north side of Highway Two, right in front, uh, that are connected to Little Star Stables. And Mr. Crutchfield, you handle my side of the property, which is one of the major issues that happens because of. And Mr. Crutchfield, you handle my side of the property, which is one of the major issues that happens because of Highway Two where the elevation sits and where the roadways are. My house pretty much is the center point of where the rain falls. Now, what has happened is that there is no restoration or improvement to the area runoff areas for the lakes and streams, but also Little Creek River, which actually runs directly behind my property, has three cutoffs. And all of the cutoffs on Highway Two North on Mr. Crutchfield, on Mr. McKinney's side, is actually full of nothing but trees that have actually been there before Hurricane Michael hit. In fact, in Google Images alone, those areas have never been touched since nineteen ninety four. And I actually have been, uh, uh, proof of that to show, and I could submit all these images to you. Now, um, what I was wanting to note is what was the purchase or purpose of the contracting company that came out to dig out the ditches?
Was that part of the?
That's the state road. State road.
State road, okay. Was there an after action report after completion of project of any discrepancies that were due to non-improvement of excavated areas?
Can I just jump in here? Howie, any work down on Highway Two was a state road? We would have no information on that.
Actually, you would because under, uh, the EPA and also Florida Department of Transportation, you actually can improve, uh, the wetland areas in that way. Under the Stormwater Improvement Project and also the EPA annually provides grants to protect and restore watersheds affected by non-point source pollution, uh, receiving almost six million dollars annually. And the department selects high priority local restoration projects to restore verified impaired springs, rivers, lakes, and estuaries. And since two thousand four, the department has contracted over fifty one million dollars for over three hundred and nineteen grants to local governments, nonprofits, and water management districts. You, as the county, actually fall under the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and the Total Maximum Daily Load Water Quality Restoration Grant. That is a mouthful. The CWSRF has awarded over one point one billion dollars with a B in funding to over one hundred and twenty projects from the beginning of Florida to the very end of the Keys. Now,
Let me, you know, this way too much information.
I, I understand a lot, but, but we are running into the issue because of the fact that, um, after mowing, which actually got done today on Highway Two.
By who?
Um, I'm guessing the John Deere tractors that, I guess, Mr. Brett Daniel.
We don't.
Things. You're asking about scope work for a DOT project. We have nothing to do with DOT projects. All of these wetland areas on private property. We also do not actively exit private property for any type of wetland delineation or restoration.
Actually, we are, we are actually exempt from that because we are a nonprofit organization entity. So we actually do not, we do not actually have to file any permits or anything like that. We are exempt from that.
We're still talking about two different things. You're saying about county involvement. The county has no involvement on either state contracts or your private ways, your private property.
So who is in charge of actually taking care of the unwanted, uh, greens that are growing in, say, culverts and runoffs and everything like that?
Depends on the road. If it's on Highway Two, the project you're referring to, that would be FDOT.
And I'm assuming there's no way of actually having a survey or planner come out to address these areas since it hasn't been touched in over five years?
It'd be up to you, FDOT.
FDOT has, uh, just spoke with them yesterday. They said to get with you. Actually, they said to get with the county.
Well, let's do, we're, we're, we're not gonna be able to solve this tonight. I would, I would invite you to, to contact Will Ann and Rhett and see if you can get a little bit more detail, but it sounds like to me that this is a, a Department of Transportation issue, potentially.
Uh, no, they said it was actually up to you because you are the county and they said this would be a county movement because it is a wetland area that is supposed to be actually cured and taken care of by the county.
If it's on private property.
Let me ask. Are there ditches, old ditches going into and out of those wetlands?
Yes.
River as well. The river actually runs through, that's why they also said.
And the issue, and the issue that we are having is massive flooding, which is actually have taken lives of many of my animals. Because not only is the river not taken care of since Hurricane Michael, obviously where the house is sits, it's also been done by renters, so no one cared about any of it and none of the projects were done. I have photos of everything that I walked along to where the dredge goes from one foot to twelve feet. But all that water comes through Little Creek, floods into my property and is not only killing my irrigation, but is also killing my access to the rescuers in the back and also everything that we have in the backyard as well. So none of, none of the, I've only been able to cut down trees myself and move them out of the way and clear it myself. But I, I need major equipment. I need excavators. I need an actual planner and surveyor to come out and actually look at the runoffs that are not only going under the highway, but also into the ponds, I guess you could say, but the river itself. And now that it is dried up, it took over a year for it to dry because it was that much saturated. You now have the opportunity to come out and actually dig out everything with, uh, machinery.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Michelle, repairian writes.
All right, so before I give any kind of opinion on this, I just wanna say something like this is not appropriate for the public comment portion of the meeting. This needs to come through administration so that staff can adequately research these concerns and so that I can review these concerns. I, I can't give any kind of opinions about this on the fly.
And that's what I was gonna say is I, I think what I will do is get you to, direct you to Will Ann and let her, uh, bring the proper county resources to, uh, the discussion to see if there's something that we can even help you with. I mean, I don't, I don't know. It's too big of a, I don't have a, an overall understanding of what it, what it is you're actually been talking about.
I'm actually just trying to restore wetlands conservation. I'm actually trying to restore the wetlands to where it's not flooding my property and killing my animals that we're trying to rescue when every time it majorly rains.
Is that, I don't know if that's a county issue.
It is according to FDOT because this is considered under the Wetlands Act and the, the county itself, even after, say for instance, when people come out and mow, like when Mr. Branch was talking about two weeks ago as far as the mowing, there's supposed to be a crew that is supposed to take out unwanted vegetation that has grown behind guardrails, behind, uh, culverts that are near the ditches and also.
Is this on Highway Two?
Yes.
See, that's a, that's a FDOT maintained roadway, not a county maintained roadway.
They told me to come to you guys. I was on the phone with them for two and a half hours and explained to them.
I would invite you to go see them. I mean, really true.
Did your deed reflect any sort of an easement for this ditch?
No, sir.
Yeah, well, no, it's to the guardrails. Why that's, I mean, a little bit passing then also that's why I keep bringing up the river. The river is supposed to be maintained by the county.
The river is supposed to be maintained by the county?
Yes.
Yeah, FDOT, yes. There's those runoffs go into the river.
Again, I think this is, this is way too detailed and too deep for us to really comment on. I, I would again invite you to contact Ms. Daniels and see if she can steer you in the right direction because it's too, too complex for me to even grasp.
No, I completely understand. And like I said, now is the time to actually act because it is so dried up now that you're able to actually walk in it. Because like I said, all during last year when I was deployed in Africa, it was completely flooded. It ruined our entire plans to housing more animals for our rescue. And it not only destroyed my fencing, but it destroyed the irrigation around that we were trying to grow, which is also one of the problems and issues that has to be brought up because it created a pollutant in the area to where none of the grounds could be used for any irrigation or growth for plants or future trees to be planted. So that's why the DOT told me to come to you because since it is under the Clean Water Act that the county can act on, that's why they wanted me to come to you and address the situation.
Well, Will Ann, can you give him your contact information and let's have a conversation with our staff so that we can get a better grasp on what it is that you're at.
Just to update the information for what district you're in, actually in District Two now.
I am in District Two, yes. But the problem is, is on your side where the two main runoff ponds are, Highway Two, and then the stream comes.
All of it is District Two now because since twenty twenty two, uh, District One moved to Brown, east of you, which is Brown Town Road. That's where District One starts.
Gotcha. Okay, so you're no, you're no longer, I got you. Okay, so it is Mr. Crutchfield alone for that problem. Okay, all right, then that map just needed to be up.
And it may be, maybe worthwhile for Commissioner Crutchfield to, to meet you up there and take a look at it as well.
But I know that state road, which they got it right away, just like the county got it right away. And, and they, they maintain all that pipes, ditches, clean out pipes. They may have told you something different, but they don't. We don't do any work on the state road.
Actually, under the county law, you are supposed to report any natural disasters that happened because they, they are not aware of anything that goes on in the state, obviously, unless it's brought up. So under the county, there's supposed to be an assessment of damage that was done, i.e. the tornado. There is trees blocking the entire, uh, culvert and actually under the ditch well itself, which is supposed to be reported to the DOT for them to come out, but instead it has to go, obviously, the chain of command to you guys first, then to DOT.
So is, is the problem stemming from that, that one culvert being blocked up?
No, it's actually several. Going down one mile west of me, going into Graceville and then going two miles east of me, I walked it. Every single culvert was completely.
Those are culverts under Highway Two.
Yes, and also on the culvert main itself because there's unwanted vegetation that goes down all the way to Shinelo.
What you're saying is all we've got to do is let DOT know that and then I take care of it.
Yes, you're supposed to notify them after any natural disasters to say, hey, this is what is the situation. This is the actual problem. This is what caused it. This is the aftermath of the storm. You need to now address this to DOT and show them.
DOT, when, when those tornadoes came through, DOT was part of that overall process. I mean, I, I sat in a lot of those meetings and FDOT was part of that emergency response process, correct? So I mean, they were, there was a lot of tornado damage there and then also in and around Marianna and they were part of that overall assessment. We had federal teams, state teams come in and, and do an assessment and there were reports that were issued at that point in time.
DOT took eight months, or no, excuse me, uh, seven months to remove a downed telephone pole that was down on my property. So if that tells you anything, when everyone else was already getting power restored and everything and everything was getting cleaned up within, say, two months after the storm, we were still sitting in the dark.
Well, there, I mean, there were, there were damages in and around.
DOT was responsible for that.
Right.
Florida line power is the one that run your power, which I know on that road, which you know, they had a road closed for two or three days.
That I do know. Yeah, that I do know for sure.
Power line getting all that back up running, you know. I, I don't know how long it's out of power, but I know they've been out of power for a while too.
After, after the meeting, give, give your information to Ms. Daniels and, and we can, you can have conversations with her and she can bring the appropriate staff, uh, to the discussion and see if there's something that we can do to help you with it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, uh, anyone else from the audience wishing to speak for an issue that's not on the agenda? With that being said, Michelle, anything from council?
I just wanna address the public comment, um, portion of the meeting and the time limitation and an issue that I foresee coming up if we don't stick to our three minute rules. And that is if we allow speakers on one topic to have more than three minutes, but we don't allow speakers on another topic to have more than three minutes, we're engaging in what's called content or viewpoint discrimination. That's a violation of the First Amendment.
The only, the only issue I have with that is some of these issues are even for us to even begin to have even an underst, rudimentary understanding of what it is that they're asking. I mean, sometimes it takes more than three minutes.
But if you need more than three minutes, then you need to be routed to administration to be placed on the agenda where there are no time limitations. The issue is not equally applying a rule that we've implemented across the board to all speakers. This is where we're gonna, we're gonna get tripped up. Uh, if we allow, no matter how much you want to engage with individual, public comment should be the person speaking for up to three minutes. If you need a question and answer session or you need more information about that, it needs to be an agenda item.
Yeah, so there. Thank you. Will Ann? Mr. Peacock?
I do, believe it or not. Uh, county has a policy on driveway connections. And I think, uh, the policy now is that people come in, they apply for a permit, we send the supervisor out. I think they pay twenty five dollars for the permit, or they for you. For you, okay. But, uh, anyway, they go out, our supervisor, I guess, tells them what size pipe and everything and they put it in. I've got a young couple that's trying to get a mobile home and they're being told it's gonna cost them three thousand dollars for a driveway. And we have had problems with this, uh, these driveway pipes. They set them wrong. They have them reversed and they don't set them correctly. I think the county ought to look at, uh, going away from that policy and going to, you know, if someone comes in, they need a driveway. Uh, nine times out of ten, they're probably putting in a house or something that's going to increase the value, which obviously will give us more added little room taxes. But, uh, if we just started saying, fine, it'll cost you X number of dollars for a stick of twenty four inch or eighteen inch pipe, we take that there and we set it and, uh, we charge them for the pipe. I think it's something we need to look at because I've had several problems with these people setting pipes.
I can tell my private contractors that are putting.
Oh, yeah.
Putting pipe in.
It ain't, I don't know who puts them in. Probably individuals are setting them and they set them wrong. There's one down on Old Spanish Trail right now, under asphalt. It's set wrong and it causes flooding. Needs to be dug out. I, I just think we need, we're responsible for the things anyway. Just charge them for the material, uh, you know, the pipes, dirt. We get a dirt from our dirt pits. I think it's something we need to look at.
I agree with you a hundred percent on that because, uh, it has been issued throughout my district. Pipe's been mis, misappropriated. Like I said, once they hit them, they, they belong to us then.
Yeah, and then we gotta go fix it.
That's right.
I, I think we'd be ahead of the game to just get ahead of it.
You wanna have staff to put together kind of a policy on that or some recommendations?
I've read and I have had a conversation on it.
So on average, um, we get about six or seven permits per month for new installations. They're not always construction, sometimes it's farmland or whatever. Um, so what we're looking at, we got two ways to do it. One, say, we'll, you know, we'll install it and you pay costs, whatever, materials, labor, everything. Um, another option would be, so we don't currently have a, a detailed plan or typical section or anything like that for the installation. Essentially, when they come through, uh, community development for, say, a residential development order, that permit is within that packet that comes to Roden Bridge. District Supervisor will go out. Hopefully, the property owner has staked the area they want to put it. Um, District Supervisor will then say, all right, you need twenty four inch, modern ends, RC twelve, plastic or metal. Um, and then once it's installed, if it's approved, we would take over maintenance from then on. We do have some that were put in wrong, that we did not approve, that we do not maintain. We have several areas that people have had access that they have not done a permit, have not done a culvert. They're just driving straight off the asphalt or made their own driveway or whatever. Um, so we could either come up with a better detailed plan for either the property owners or the contractors to follow so it's easier to get in, I hate to say compliance, but to build it correctly. And then we have a better product we're responsible for or go back to installing them and just charge them whatever labor and materials are. Sometimes they're pretty simple, cheap plastic pipe, but a couple loads of dirt and you're good. Sometimes they're not. Sometimes they're quite extensive and, um, and talking with one of our district supervisors that's been here for a while, um, according to him, when we did the installations, we also did them on state roadways as well. So I don't know exactly what that relationship was. Definitely don't wanna get into doing that because, um, some of them are, you know, concrete, mitered ends, metal pipes, some of them very large. It can be very costly. Um, I know one instance in District Four years ago, took fifteen loads of dirt to tie it back up into the bank between the roadway. Um, so some of them could still be expensive if we did it, but we would have to charge whatever our labor and materials would be.
I'm not so sure we need to charge for the labor.
We have to.
They, uh, we're gonna pay them whether they hauling dirt or, uh, doing something else. I mean, they're on the, they're on the salary. I mean, they're salaried and they're gonna get paid. So I, and for, from the economic development.
So I, and for from the economic development point of view, you know, helping these people get these things in will help the county grow and increase our ad valorem.
So we're talking about just the culvert and field dirt, I mean, we're not talking about concrete driveways or anything like that? We're talking about just culvert and dirt.
I'm talking the pipe and dirt.
Why is your normal driving?
Use a twenty foot pipe, depending on.
How much is a twenty foot pipe?
Plastic.
Depends on size.
I have passed one, probably around eight hundred bucks.
Depends on the size, if you're looking at thirty inch pipe versus twelve inch pipe, it's a lot different.
Yeah.
Used to, they they would uh, go out and tell them what size pipe they needed and they bought the pipe and county put it in. And I guess no problem, there you know. Now, I know like you're talking about, you may not have so many permits a month, a lot of people putting them in themselves.
Yeah, and we're gonna have problems.
Yeah, and they get away, they they wanna get away from that twenty five hundred, three thousand dollar. They just run them off, now they go buy the pipe.
Yeah, I like the idea of buying, you know, basically us telling them what size we think they need and then we put it in to make sure that we're just being put in the right way.
And where it needs to be plastic or metal.
Yeah.
Especially if we're gonna maintain it.
Yeah, especially if we're gonna maintain it.
Well, I think by them doing it, you're getting all kind of installations out there, like you're talking about. All kind of pi- pipes that need food, be metal or plastic, but you're gonna buy the cheapest thing. And uh, then kinda gonna have to go back and put it in for free. Well, I reckon, like you said, if they didn't get a permit, I reckon you wouldn't do it, but they gonna expect you to.
Well, is that, I mean, do you wanna issue a directive to staff to to come have some type of recommendation?
Uh, yes. I make a motion to, we have staff to develop a policy to for changing the driveway installation policy that's in existence now.
With the goal of trying to to limit the cost to let to homeowners, to property owners.
I, I don't see any problem us supplying the pipe, just charge them for it.
Well.
Rather, because you know, we know what quality of pipe we're buying. They go buy pipe, who knows where they're gonna get it?
Well, I guess my question is if we buy it.
They pay us.
How how are we gonna make sure they pay us?
Well, we bill them for it. That's the risk you take.
Well, let's, let's.
Well, we can put.
You understand what the intent is, is to try to, try to make sure that we're getting quality installations that are not gonna be problematic in the future and to to encourage uh, development. Uh, so come back with some type of recommendation uh, that we can, we can look at and and potentially approve.
If if uh, they tell them what kind of pipe to get, I I'm gonna think, how a problem when I get the wrong pipe? You know, once you told them, there's gotta be plastic or metal and what size? If it don't fit that size, they gotta get one that fits that size.
Aren't there different grades of pipe, metal and plastic, different grade, come in different grades?
Different grades?
If if we went this route, which I am not advocating for, we, we talk every meeting, how much we're not getting done. I don't think adding more to it's gonna help anything. Um, but I'll prefer we supply materials, that just helps scheduling, you ain't gotta worry about, hey, uh, you know, they gotta be here next week, when we say we're ready, we got it on the yard, we're ready to go. And we just charge them what it costs for the pipe.
Bring us a a recommendation back, our our next meeting or the one. All right, anything else, Commissioner Pickup?
That's all I got.
Commissioner McKinney, Mr. Crutchfield, I don't have anything either, so with that being said, we'll adjourn this meeting in Jackson County Board of County Commissioners.